All right, we'll start with roll call. Thank you. Thank you. Mayor Protem Labar?
President.
Councilmember Alfieri, here. Councilmember Case?
Here.
Councilmember Nakai?
Here.
Councilmember Neal?
Here.
Councilmember Zulawaga?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, in tonight's agenda, we're going to start off with appointments to the Planning Commission Historical Preservation Committee, and it's my understanding that the Board of Adjustments or Board of Review. And let's go ahead and start with the Planning Commission appointments.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. As council knows, every January, terms expire on our current boards and commissions, and the city clerk's office advertises for these positions. So we have advertised, we advertised on the website, on Facebook, sent letters to all of the incumbents encouraging them to apply. Regarding the Planning Commission, we have applications from incumbent Lee Brown and from Ken Hartsfield. We also received applications from Deanne Betterman and Kenneth Kennedy. So we have two incumbents applying and then two new people. There were 13 meetings held in 2021, and Lee Brown attended all of those meetings. There are currently three vacancies that expire January 1st, 2025, and there are currently two additional vacancies that expire on January 1st, 2024, as a result of resignations. So for a total of five open positions. So we have four applications for five positions this evening for you to consider. The candidates' applications were in your packet. You've received all of those applications, and I believe everybody is here in the audience with us tonight for those positions and available for council to interview.
Great. So let's go ahead and start with the incumbents if they, if one of them would like to come up to the podium and...
Let's see, we could start with Lee Brown?
They can do rock, paper, scissors if they want.
Rock, paper, scissors.
Good evening. So Lee, I'm sure council may have some questions or comments for you, and if you'd just give us a brief rundown of how long you've been serving and why you're interested in continuing.
I served one year plus a few, plus a few months additional. I served, actually, I asked to, one of the planning commission shortly after I retired, I've been living in Woodland Park for several years before that. Once retired, I'm more available for time purposes. And as an attorney, it seems close to what I had some experience in. In my previous, previous residence, I've been on City Planning and zoning commission and something similar to our board of adjustments and the like. It's an opportunity to engage the community and serve the community. So that's what I was looking for, for opportunities.
Very good. Council, questions?
How have you found your last year in a bit serving? What insights and what have you felt you've contributed?
This past year was probably a more busier year than it had been previously because of the comprehensive plan. So I wouldn't have known there were 13 meetings per last year. There were probably almost twice that many we had comprehensive plan going on. It served the councilman Neil with respect to public safety and resiliency. That actually, that opportunity provided more active engagement than some other things because people have lots of views and they have lots of input coming in, and it came up a result that I think everyone was comfortable with. I enjoyed working on the planning, planning commission. There have been a couple of occasions, I guess, when things have been not unanimous. I think I've contributed effectively in those areas, and hopefully do so again in the future.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Thank you. So in your application under pressing issues facing the city, one of the things you had mentioned is supporting responsible balanced growth that includes affordable housing. Can you expand on what you think the role of government in providing affordable housing is?
I think the government's role provided is providing the opportunity, not Woodland Park, a lot of that would be making certain that we have not rezoning, precluded the ability for people, if the market exists, to provide for public housing opportunities. I don't think we're going to, Woodland Park certainly isn't going to be building public housing, I don't expect. So it's providing, it's providing the opportunity, not restricting it unnecessarily, like any zoning thing where externalities result from developments which are undesirable.
Council, anything further? No? Okay. I'm, I think what we'll do Suzanne is we'll let everyone come up and speak and then have a discussion on a vote.
Perfect.
Oh, Catherine, did you have anything?
Yes, I just wanted to thank Lee for his service and his continued attempt to serve. Thanks, Lee.
Thank you, Lee.
So the next would be Ken Hartsfield for Planning Commission.
Ken Hartsfield, lived in one Sundance Circle. You can just jump into it if you like.
Sure.
He served on the planning commission for quite a number of years. My first involvement was back in 2001. I served seven years at that point. I left town on some family matters and came back and I just paid my six more years. So I've got a long history of what's been happening in the town and the progress, growth that's out. That's an asset. Certainly provides perspective professionally. I'm an architect and have experience in development projects and understand what's involved and hopefully asking the right questions on projects presented to us.
Very good. Council?
Unfair. I held them all.
Sure. Robert, go ahead.
Thanks for serving, Ken. I was interested in your comments on, on your opinion, the most pressing issues in the city of Woodland Park. Could you expand on them? You have water availability and business vacancies.
Well, water availability, it's a limiting factor to growth in town. And what we do with those available water rights to, whether it's multifamily developments, whether that's part of the allotment for residential, the possibility of increasing our water resources and the development. But it's certainly a limiting factor and can more and more critical as time progresses and development happens. And with the vacancies downtown, obviously, the business base is critical to town and the atmosphere we created, creating this incredible livable space. And so what we can do to help encourage that, the planning commission, I'm not much sure we have much resources, but we can certainly consider that when we get applications and how that increase the availability of living spaces.
Anything further? No? Okay, thank you, Ken.
Next, we have Deanne Betterman.
Catherine, like I said, just holler because I won't know, so.
And she did send a message to us. I just saw it.
Yeah.
She's having a hard time hearing us, so we all need to speak really loudly into the microphone.
Okay, very good.
I'm Deanne Betterman, and I have lived in the area for 20 years. I've lived in town now for almost two, but I've volunteered all over town. I'm a registered nurse, and I have worked in two of the elementary schools with special ed kids, but mostly my work in the city is related to Woodland Park Community Church, where I worked, did quite a few different things with Storehouse, and I think you all are familiar with Storehouse. We, my eyes were opened when I was a firewood visitor, and I visited people in their homes, and that's when I got to find out how people were living around here. And, and I know we get a lot of people at Storehouse when we have our turn who are looking for money to go to Oregon from California, or they're looking for food, and we have all those resources and we hand out food. We have a really cool medical equipment that is well-known all over the place. Even people in the Springs comes up to get. And, and so I get to know, and I ask people who are going to have their knee surgeries if their next door neighbor's going to bring them their food or what, and they don't, some of the guys don't think about that stuff. I have three reasons why I would like to participate, and one of them is because we have, we know that people are going to move out of the cities and move to a nice towns like ours. Ours is a safe town, and I think people with families, even though it's expensive to live here with a family now, that this would be a great place. I think that we're proud of certain aspects of our town, and if the Planning Commission does a good job, then we will have more things to be proud of. When I expect more people to want to live here and to build here, and I know that there, even when I talk to my neighbors, there are those of us who have lived here a long time and those who are new, and so I think we can have both aspects, the wisdom of both aspects. But I think we should always stay a step ahead of what's going on, even if we looked across the country and if we kept statistics of how well we grew and the reasons why and how we did this, I think we would be a step ahead of everyone else. I have talked to a couple neighbors, and we have really great ideas for planning for a new, for a growing city. One of them I would like to mention tonight is to bring the aspect of the rodeo back into town, and of course, we're talking about parking. We're talking about land space to have a rodeo. We would like to keep that Western flavor here in our town as we grow with new people who aren't even used to those things. I think that's about all that I would like to tell you. If you have any questions for me.
Very good, council.
Well, for this, I'm sorry, Ms. Betterman, I don't know you, and I have stopped the practice of having cups of coffee, so this is basically going to be our coffee chat, so I have a lot of questions. First of all, you did pull a packet to run for city council, correct?
Yes, I did.
So if you were to win, this would really be a four-month stint on the Planning Commission. May I ask why you did not wait until the results of the election come in so that we, we know whether you would be there or really not be there?
When I participated in Citizens Academy, I just got more enthusiastic the more I learned about it. And when we had our one evening on planning, on city planning, I was, I found something new that I've never been interested in before, and I would like to take these four months and learn everything I can and, and let my ideas be known. And especially if I have these great ideas, but we don't have parking and we don't have roads, I want to learn the procedures of how does a small town make roads and where do we get the money? I've heard from a couple of people I've had coffee with that more industry, which we don't really have a lot, more visitors. And so I am into the arts, and I would like to have some, some things up here in Woodland Park where people from the Springs would come up and would spend their money around here and enjoy, and then go back to their homes. So I'm, would like to learn funding.
Okay. I'm not sure that answered the question, but let me go on to more important question. You listed three of the most pressing issues, and they're bullets like clean water, housing, and traffic. Could you talk about each one individual, starting with clean water? And I'll prod you for each one just to trigger your memory.
Right.
Clean water.
It hasn't been long since I've been to where we have our reservoir, and I am impressed. I was, I, I was, you know, feeling bad that we don't have our own. Why don't we have our own springs here in Woodland Park? And when I discovered that our water is piped in and we have long-term contracts with those people, then I was kind of satisfied. But also, when we went to Citizens Academy, we found out how the runoff water is treated, and I'm, I'm pleased with the organization, that the people who run our water, it is clean and it is good. Everybody who lives here talks about traffic. Everyone does. And so that would be an area of study for me. I think it's very important, if a city's going to grow, that we plan ahead of time for more people driving to work and driving to school and getting to church. So that's an area that we really need to work on, I believe, here, and also along with parking.
Okay, and the third one was housing?
Oh, yes. One of the things at Storehouse, that was kind of sad, and I'm sure you guys have all heard this already. A married couple came in and said, "We were born and raised here, and we've been living in an apartment, and our kids go to school here, and we thought we would live here forever, and we cannot afford to live here anymore." So the solutions to affordable housing might have to come from studying other areas, maybe, maybe Vale and Breckenridge. But I, I believe that we should have a mixture of levels of economic development, where we have the lower, people who make the less amount of money, mixed in with people who have a lot of money, and I think it's healthy for a community to live like that.
That begs the question that Stephanie asked earlier. What is your belief of the role of government in terms of affordable housing? What is our, what is our role?
I believe the role is zoning, and if there are some good contractors out there with ideas that we take a look at, you know, of course, the number of people that they're building for and our resources, and that we should encourage them and support them. The government does not have, we do not have, I don't think, the right to build. We can't provide for affordable housing, but we can encourage it.
When you say we could provide for?
We cannot.
We cannot provide the housing?
Government, I don't believe, should be building affordable housing. I think government should be approving the, the private sector who have contractors who have a good plan. And so we would have to zone, we'd have to maybe annex. Maybe our city has to annex some land. Those are things.
And then I have one last, and then I'm, I'm sorry, but I didn't take the time to meet with anybody. You, you've mentioned a lot of church-related activities, and you even mentioned getting traffic, transportation to church. What is your thoughts, or can you define your understanding of the separation of church and state?
I'm one of the many who this last year have taken classes on the Constitution and the original intent. It was never written in the Constitution to separate church and state, except when government tells churches how they have to make their rules.
Okay, great, thank you.
Council, any further questions, comments?
Well, Deanne? I have one. Sorry.
You first, though.
Have you attended any planning commission meetings?
No, I haven't had the chance to put those on my schedule yet.
Okay, thanks.
So, Ms. Betterman, I want to applaud you for your enthusiasm. Yeah, I mean, your curiosity and interest is, is contagious, and I hope others in the community also follow suit. It's pretty apparent that it was, this would be a learning curve for you, but I think that we have the vacancies on the board to allow for apprenticeships. So from that standpoint, I encourage your application and, yeah, and your answers. They're very refreshing. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks.
And then we have Kenneth Kennedy.
Good evening. Hi, how are you?
Good evening.
You'll have to excuse me. I did have some dental work done today, and I'm still numb. I bite my tongue, but, yeah, there you go. Thank you.
So if you would just give us a brief introduction as to why you're interested in the Planning Commission and a little bit about your professional history, that would be great.
Sure. So I'm an electrical engineer. I've been, started off my career in aerospace and then went into startup companies doing technology startups, and I got into consulting, and I've been doing project management consulting for clients in different cities around the country, where I do large capital expansion projects for businesses. One example is $115 million project in St. Louis. I was the project program manager for Schnucks Markets to build a new warehouse complex with transportation facilities, requires interface with utility companies, zoning, city, building officials, fire departments, fire marshals and so forth. So I've been in that area doing greenfield and brownfield projects for about 20 years now. I've been in Woodland Park for six years, lived here, and my work is transitioning where I'm not having to travel quite so much, and I was looking for, you know, how can I participate more in the town that I've been living in? And I saw that they had applications, and I thought that might be a position that I could work in as an engineer, as somebody who's been around building construction utilities, what it takes to put new things in place in different cities, and maybe contribute in that regard. So I thought I would apply, see if that meets a need, and I'd be happy to participate.
Very good. Council, questions?
Well, again, Ken, thank you for applying, and I just like what I see on some of these applications. You go, having good people to participate, the very fact that you're, that you want to participate in government and in the affairs of the community, I think is, I think is commendable. So if you've got some skills in the area too, there, once again, it's a learning curve, you know, not, all of these are, is stepping up and, and listening and contributing what you've got, so good on you. Thank you.
Anything further? Sure. Yeah, I just have a comment, not really a question. Suzanne, do we have any open spots on Board of Review?
We do.
Okay, so regardless, based on your experience, even if this is not your appointment to the Planning Commission, I would highly suggest, based on your experience, seek out perhaps a position on Board of Review that might fit in really well there.
I've put in a lot of drawings over the years.
If, if you're not appointed to Planning Commission, not making any assumptions, but that is a group of highly technical citizens in that specific area.
First thing I saw that I thought, oh, you know, I might be able to help with that. I've got some background that's come up, so.
Quite honestly, I mean, Board of Review is something with your experience, I'd, I'd probably like to see you serve on if you're not appointed to Planning Commission, but that, with that high technical.
Meetings and the opportunity to do some of them virtually if I were on travel made this look like something I could support.
Perfect.
I'm not sure about Board of Review, what the demands are of the schedule, so I, but I'd be interested in looking at it if it's something you think would be better.
I think we'd be lucky either way. Thank you. Suzanne, is there a conflict with serving on both?
What I was going to ask.
Are you saying either or? Is that what you were saying?
Can they?
I'm going to defer to the city attorney. I don't know that, we've never had that question before.
I don't imagine there is, but.
Yeah, it doesn't immediately, it occurred to me why there would be any conflict here.
The only thing I could think of is the opportunity for something that the Planning Commission refers to the council could possibly be subject to review by the Board of Review. So that's the only thing that I think, and that doesn't happen very often. It did happen with a certain project, but that you're close to and familiar with. But that would be the only thing that would come to mind that might cause some question.
Is there a potential to recuse from a voting position then? The only reason I'm asking is you're well-qualified for both, and you may want the opportunity to get your feet wet in both, and then pick one or the other maybe. I'm not, I'm being presumptuous here, I understand, but it's, it's not often that we get people that are so well-qualified that are interested in participating. We have two gentlemen back here are very well-qualified, and they've really served our community well, and, and then, and I don't mean to qualify volunteers because it's a volunteer position, so I'm grateful for anyone that steps up, so let me say that. But to Stephanie's point, it's a very good point, and if there wouldn't be a conflict, or if there would be a way that maybe you could get your feet wet in both.
I'd be happy to look at information about the position and let you know what I think is my capability in that regard.
Sure. They don't meet often. It's as needed, and so it wouldn't be like a regular meeting like typically the planning commission. So it would be very few and far between from my memory that that, that would present itself for you to attend. So, anyway, thank you.
The Board of Review, just so you know, it meets the third Thursday of each month at 3:30 PM.
Okay.
If there's cases.
And we're not saying we, we have to point you now or anything, but it might be something you would want to check out. We're just going to do it whether you like it or not. You didn't know what you were walking into? Yeah. Yeah, so, but, but everyone, council made a good point. We're just kind of all thinking out loud, so we don't mean to scare you, but. All right, are there any further questions or comments?
No.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for your consideration.
So if I may recap?
Sure.
For the council, there are three terms that are open that expire 2025 and two terms that are open that expire 2024. So if any of these are individual, if any of these individuals are appointed, I would like for council to note what term they're being appointed for.
Okay. So that kind of raises a discussion for us then.
Do you need a motion, or we're going to just go through each one?
Yeah, how, how do you all propose that we process?
I think we should do them individually.
Okay.
Do a motion individually, and I'm going to do a manual vote rather than spending the time waiting for you to vote this on Civic Clerk right now, just for time's sake.
Thank you.
So are we ready for a motion?
Well, how, I think the conundrum is how do we choose who's going to serve what term?
So the full term.
Yeah.
So the, okay, let, let me start with the two terms that are open for 2024 are vacancies. People resigned. The full terms are the three terms that are open to 2025.
Right.
So I, I'm not persuading you in any way. I just want you to understand if you want to appoint for full terms or partial terms.
Why don't we fill the?
Full terms first.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
So we would just make a motion, I, you know, something like, I'd like to make a motion for John Doe for the full-term position, and then a second, and then we take the vote.
Sure. That will work.
2025.
Glad someone appears awake.
If we could do them in order too, if you want.
We can do that. So let me start this off then. I move that we approve the appointment of Lee Brown to the full term expiring in 2025 to the Planning Commission. Does that work for you, Suzanne?
That's perfect. And I have a second by Case.
Yeah.
Okay. Alfieri?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Zulawaga?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, I will go again. I move that we approve the appointment of Deanne Betterman.
Okay, I will go again. I move that we approve the appointment of DM Betterman for the full term to 2025 for the planning commission.
I'll second it.
Case?
No.
Labar?
No.
Nakai?
No.
Neil?
No.
Zulawaga?
Yes.
Alfieri?
Yes.
Thank you. A motion failed for two.
For voting no.
Do you guys want me to just run the list and we can do this? So I move that we approve the appointment to Kenneth, the appointment of Kenneth Kennedy for the full term ending in 2025 to the planning commission.
I'll second.
Okay.
Labar?
No.
Nakai?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Zulawaga?
Yes.
Alfieri?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five, one.
Okay, last one up. I move. Sorry, I can't do this one. Someone else is gonna have to motion it.
I'll make a motion to approve Ken Hartsfield to a three year term or a term, full term expiring in 2025 on the planning commission.
I'll, I'll second that.
Do we have another vacancy?
Oh, no. Yes. Yeah, we do, don't we?
We're only a two. Okay.
Okay, so who seconds that?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Nakai?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Zulawaga?
Yes.
Alfieri?
No.
Case?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five, one and for purposes of the record, I'd like to just recap the votes.
Suzanne, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I didn't mean to vote no for Mr. Kennedy. And I don't know if I can requalify that. I was thinking there was only two spaces open for 2025 for the full term.
Let's take a revote.
Is it a material change? I think he.
Does it change?
He was appointed regardless, right?
It, right. I just. Because I didn't want him to not be appointed. I, I wasn't paying attention to the term limits.
So that brings up a question for me. There is, there was a motion to appoint Ms. Betterman for a three-year term.
Yeah.
Can a motion be made to appoint her for a two-year term now seeing we?
Yes.
Yes.
So I would so move then.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are we revoting on?
We're voting for Ms. Betterman for a two-year term for two, 2024. I'm making a motion.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Who said that first?
Alfieri can have it.
So this is for Ms. Betterman to be appointed for the two-year term expiring 2024. I have a motion by Zulawaga, a second by Alfieri, and I'll take the vote. Neil?
Excuse me? No.
Zulawaga?
Yes.
Alfieri?
Yes.
Case?
No.
Labar?
Yes.
Nakai?
No.
Okay, so we have a tie. So the vote is three, three, so it fails. Okay, so to recap, because I just want to make sure it's on the record correctly, appointed to the three, the three appointees to the three-year term expiring in 2025 are Lee Brown, Ken Kennedy and Ken Hartsfield.
Correct.
Okay, when we finish the historical preservation appointments, I can do the oaths of office for everybody.
Did we want to revote on Kennedy so that Hillary can get the record straight?
He's on anyways. It's all right.
Okay.
Okay, now historical president, board of review, no applications received. So we can skip over that. Unless we get his application over there. Over there. Historical Preservation Committee. Incumbent members Lori Gloth and David Langley have submitted their applications for consideration. And an additional application was received from Linda Allred. There were nine meetings held in 2021 and Lori Gloth attended nine of those meetings and David Langley attended seven of those meetings. There are currently three terms expiring 2026 and one term expiring 2025 due to a resignation. Now Lori Gloth has texted me. She had had a, she has a family emergency. So she is not with us in the audience this evening. I do not see David Langley in the audience. And I don't know Linda Allred. So if you were here, please forgive me. Okay, they were all invited to attend.
I see Rob's hand up.
Okay, so Linda's here and they, they were given the option to appear via Zoom as well.
Yeah, that's fine. So we'll go ahead and start with Linda and then for the other two, we'll just carry their appointments over to the next meeting so that they can attend in person if that doesn't screw anything up, does it? Okay, very good. So if Linda's here, if you wanna click in, I don't have my Zoom screen, so.
Rob will bring her in.
Okay, I mean, good job, Rob. Any, any Linda. Calling all Lindas. That's okay. If, if it. So it appears that all three applicants are not here this evening. So we're gonna go ahead and table that appointment to the next meeting.
What I do now, because I know this has been council's procedure and policy recently is I do tell them if they don't appear, we won't do the appointment more than likely.
Yeah.
Okay.
Even though we know some of them.
And we'll revisit it at a later meeting.
Okay, very good.
So with your permission, may I swear and administer the oath of office to the three gentlemen that have been appointed?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Kennedy? If you would raise your right hand and repeat after me by stating your name. I. Thank you. Do you solemn swear? That I will support the Constitution as the United States. And of the state of Colorado. Just honor and witnesses. But planning commissioner. Okay, congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm gonna give them a moment to sign because we'll be using the podium for the next topic. All right, we're gonna move on to the next topic, which is item B and it's clarification on funds set aside for keep Woodland Park beautiful. And I believe Claudia Miller is here for presentation.
May I approach him?
Yes. Do you want to give a little history as to why we're having a presentation? I can do that absolutely. And correct me if I'm wrong at any time.
Absolutely.
So Ms. Miller is here to give us a presentation on something she did regarding birds and aviation and aviary at a school that she's at. And she had brought up, she was a part of the, the, for lack of better words, like the deer wise presentation just about, well, it was 2020? So 20, yeah. So we had agreed, previous council had agreed to set aside a budget for some deer wise initiatives. And it was in the realm of 300 for a videographer, 500 total was approved. And it was to go for certain items like the education program of junior wildlife ambassadors regarding deer, like deer feeding, deer gardens, deer habitat, lifespan, those types of things. And we had agreed to set that aside. So that has, that money has not been used. So Ms. Miller did do an aviation project. And she had asked the city to be reimbursed for that and the city said, well, we can't until it comes before council. We need council's approval because the topic is not what was voted on. So I'm gonna go ahead and let Ms. Miller give her presentation and then I might just handle this topic. So, but of course you all are welcome to comment and have questions. Rusty, go ahead.
Yeah, before we get to the actual presentation.
Yeah.
The topic that they did spend the money on was aviation as in flying.
No, I'm sorry. Aviary. I'm married to a pilot. I can't make the distinction.
Well, that's why I was trying to scratch my head.
He just flies away. Yeah, she did not, she did not provide planes to the schoolchildren.
But the money was appropriated in 2019.
2020.
20.
It was a work session that council held in 2019 for the budgets. When the city manager Tangman did a presentation on behalf of the deer people.
Yes, and but, and council did agree to set aside the money. The money is still set aside in the budget. It has not been used.
So it's.
And it carries over.
It just carries over. So what we would be doing is saying money that basically went into our savings account. We would be reusing based on what we're gonna be hearing about now.
Yes, and I'll be very frank. We have to make a decision of these are birds, they are not deer. Do we agree that that money then qualifies for this project?
And if I can just make a small technical point, there is $500 appropriated in the 2021 budget for this. Just for deer awareness signage is what we have in the budget. I've not been here. I don't know the context of the conversation, but that's what it said. So it's not coming out of fund balance. In 2022, it was appropriated $500 for the council budget in 2021.
We'd have to reperpetuate because that closes.
Well, the I don't, when the funds were spent on, you can make the accrual case. I suppose for bringing it back to 21.
Not when, but if. It's too late. Too late. Of course, Erin may differ with me on that. But.
Well, let's hear a presentation. Discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Erin's here, right?
Yeah, I've got the basics.
Okay. It's going around. Okay. So Ms. Miller, go ahead and.
Okay. Well, the junior wildlife ambassador program did initiate from the Be Deer Aware Program that I was part of the education part of the deer management task force with the city. And I think if you see some of the chronology of it, you'll understand why it went this way this year. The first, it was the purpose of the junior wildlife ambassador program was to educate children in the community about wildlife, their needs, living, cohabitating with people that are in our community in a successful way. And it was designed for kids that are in elementary up through high school. And the first project that was done, I brought some little hands-on things with the high school. This will all make sense in a minute, I think. Was having the but was having council or the student council members at the at the high school use it in their drive smart program. And they pass out brochures during their exhibitions to kind of inform and be ambassadors in their own way with kids at the high school. That was in the, in the fall. So in the spring, through the master program at the elementary school at Columbine, I had an opportunity to initiate, do another facet of the program. And that was actually in relation to the deer. It was the kids did data, took data for weeks. And they were looking at one of the big issues with the deer problem was where they were crossing our roads. So we compiled the data on the community chart. And we shared this with CDOT when their representatives came up. And they looked at that data from the kids and they, they talked. We were able to access data that they'd done in their, in their own investigations and that, that was a part of that. In addition, that year, we were able to thought a garden at the Williams Park. And we had it was one of the master gardeners came in and talked to the kids about plants that would be conducive to garden with the deer in mind. And so they, we planted those sits gardens and actually some kids went ahead and designed the gardens with the different garden plots. And then those were planted and for the education part of it, we went ahead and had signs made to put up on each garden so that the public coming to see the gardens in the summer would know. And they had deer resistant plants on that particular, on each garden. Okay, so that took care of that particular year with that program. Then we hit 20 and 21. And that was, I had proposed, and you can see on the second page for the 21 budget, to possibly if we could do, have a videographer come work with a high school student driving around our community in different areas where we had noted there were problems with the deer crossing the highway. And so they went ahead and I, I tried to get this thing going, but because of COVID, they didn't even do the drive smart program this year. So that wasn't a possibility. And in terms of the other part of the program, there were possible ideas that evolved from when the kids were in school and that was presenting at Farm Market. Designing a garden tour, that type of thing. Well, that wasn't possible either because during that, during that school year, we couldn't get into the schools because COVID. So something opened up this fall and that was an opportunity to do a master class over at Columbine. And they have a nature center there. And so I thought, okay, to get the kids involved in something safe outside and to kind of meet the criteria of getting kids involved in looking at our wildlife under understanding it. I thought this would be a great program. And so another really neat thing that came from that was the idea of having them do counts for the Cornell Ornithology program, feeder watch. program, Feeder Wash back in, in New York. And so we got involved with that. And the component, so we built a bird sanctuary. And a component of that was so they could be ambassadors and get kids involved in the school. They, I built backpacks for them to take out with bird books, information, sketching pads. And they have backpacks that these little ambassadors that have taken in class can go out and share with their, you know, the other kids in the school. So the fact that COVID hit, I know there have been modifications to a lot of things. And I felt even if I had to go ahead and fund it myself, I thought it was an important thing to keep the kids involved and to keep the program running. So that's kind of where it turned a bit from deer. The program itself was on wildlife in general, but I can see that there might be a little bit of a disconnect here. So I am willing to fund that myself, but I just wanted you to kind of know how that evolved. And that it's really serving a lot of kids in the community. You have some questions?
I'm going to just point out the one caveat, because I think that council had the deer wise initiative in mind when they allocated this money. Technically, it does say by a variety of service learning activities and based on the children's creative ideas as well. So it's not necessarily locked into just being deer. There is that caveat. So I just want to put that forward also because I, in my mind, I was locked on that it was just for deer. But I just want to clarify that.
You know, there was also some confusion. It was never meant to fund deer signs. I did that myself. The deer signs out.
Yeah. So council, I'm going to go ahead and open it to you guys for questions and discussion.
Thank you for your work. Very interesting. I like the kind of involvement you have for the kids in the education program. But my question is more specific to the funding from taxpayer dollars. And that is, did you incur any charge from the videographer?
We never had a videographer.
So, okay, so that's a no?
That's a no.
Okay.
Because we, we didn't do the program, that part of the program because of COVID. They didn't have a Drive Smart program.
My second comment is, it seems to me this was approved before we were on council. Or were we part of this with the budget with, with Val? Were we part of this with?
I can't remember.
It was Neil. So, so this is something from a prior council, from a prior council. My concern about this is this council has been very careful to eliminate a lot of the nonprofit groups and groups kind of coming to council to go, give me for this, give me for that, give me for the other. Because our role on council is to appropriate the tax dollars for the work of the people, for the community. And special interest groups aren't, don't really fall into that category. So as, as interesting and commendable as your work is, I would surely not be wanting to set a precedent to have more of this type of application before council. Because this really should be before the school board. This really should be with funds that come from education dollars. Not from, in my opinion, from tax dollars. I mean, from.
Yeah, but with the deer project, then why did the city council want a whole education component to that?
That was a prior council. I can't answer.
I do feel compelled to make a correction.
Sure.
The work session where this, where this was presented, this whole deer presentation occurred on September 24th, 2020. So I do believe some of you
We were alone.
were on council. I just want that for the record to make that correction. Mr. Tangman presented it on behalf of Ms. Miller. I have the work session agenda where it was presented. So I just want that clarification.
And, and then if I'm right in understanding, this monies was supposed to be allocated out of the council pool of money, the funds that came from this. Can you kind of clarify that, Michael?
Yep. There's $500 appropriated within the 2021 budget for the council. I can give you the specific line item, I think it's a special projects line. But it, and it was footnoted, perhaps erroneously, as deer signage, but it was in there, in the council budget.
My question, so you have not actually spent, it is $500 that you're seeking, correct?
You know, I've already spent it because I knew that this, I had actually, I'll mention this. I had called to the city to talk to the people in the budget department. And I didn't receive a call back twice. Because I knew there was a little twist here because of the nature of going to a bird sanctuary. And I didn't receive a call back, but I went ahead and spent the money because I didn't want to lose the opportunity. And, and in the future, I could see it dovetailing with the Keep With Them Part Beautiful with the education component of that for maybe some funding for a couple of projects that they might approve of.
Okay, I'm still a little confused. The $300 for the video, videographer was not spent or it was spent, but it was your money that spent.
We did not do that. Instead of that proposal, because it did say that a lot of it would depend on, when you read the one part, it said, as the program is student driven, it will be based on their creative ideas, resources and the status.
I understand that piece of it. I just want to get a couple of things clear. So that $300 that was for the videographer was not spent. And neither was the 200 for the resource supplies that are on this sheet of paper that we've been given, correct?
And you love us, it said possible, that these were possible ideas.
Understood. So those two were not spent right there.
Right.
So what amount was spent on the, the bird initiative, please?
You know, the total that I put out was about $700 because we got a real substantial. We got discounts on it, but items to set up the sanctuary.
Okay.
And I put in, what I had submitted was $500 to that.
I, I have to second what Robert said. I, I, I'm very reluctant about spending the taxpayers' money for it. However, my wife is a bird lover. And I, I would feel guilty if you walked away with no money. I, I just feel, I feel guilty voting, casting a citizen's representative vote for something that clearly was not what the money was appropriate. Now, maybe the lawyer can kind of guide us through some of that. But I will personally give you a hundred bucks to help offset some of it. Because we love the birds. So if you don't get a council vote necessary to reimburse you, then I personally will help you out.
No. Really, more than that. If the council feels uncomfortable with it, I really don't want the money. But I wanted to know what this project was about. And I feel that it's important in the council to look for opportunities that are going to be investments for the children. It spawned from one from the Deer Education Committee. And it's been very successful and it's going to impact a lot of kids. But if it's going to get really hung up with a lot of bureaucracy, I would rather just volunteer that money. And so you don't even really need to vote on it.
Well, I, I think it's important to understand that we represent the citizens and, and the laws. And when we do the appropriations, we're bound by certain things. Now, again, if, if I look over at our city attorney and he guides us into a way that this is not inappropriate, then I may, you know, cast a different vote. But don't give up yet until we have our full discussion. But again, I think if we appropriate money, the citizens expect us to hold ourselves accountable for executing that. Because we, we respond to the citizens. And it's a worthy program. I do agree, it should have come through the schools funding it. Because I think this is a great school academic project. And that's why I would gladly help, help you out personally. But I'd like to see how the council settles this whole discussion first. Don't walk away from the podium yet, please.
So, oh.
Go ahead.
Okay.
No, no, no.
This is a very unexpected, difficult topic. Now that we have the history to this, I was definitely not expecting this to be a topic that we would spend so much time on. A few comments that I would like to make. This is a great example of what happens when government collects money from taxpayers and allocates it for unnecessary needs. You end up with this not necessarily being spent for what is absolutely necessary. And you end up in this situation of monies unspent that will now sit in the government's pocket instead of being used to benefit the citizens. I, I know Rust, the council member Neil, you had said that, you know, our fiduciary duty is to represent all of the citizens and spend their money appropriately. I would go back even further and ask, where was our fiduciary responsibility when this money was even allocated for such a thing that now has not come to fruition? This is the downside of allocating funds for something that is not absolutely necessary and a function of government. I I am torn on this. I am absolutely torn. I don't want this $500 to remain with the city. It, it was money that they collected from the taxpayers that was not spent accordingly. That should have never been allocated for something like this. That was well outside the bounds of what government's role should be. So I don't want them to keep it. But at the same time, the idea of taking all of taxpayers' money and then returning it to a single individual is just as hard for me to stomach. My question ultimately becomes, if this money was not spent on what it was actually approved in a budget to be spent for, where does it go? If we do nothing, it goes into our reserve. It, it, it goes to the government. We took money from the citizens that we didn't spend based on how we told them we were going to spend it. How we approved it to be spent in a budget. And we didn't do that. And that is something that definitely gets me right in the gut. I, I can't support your request to have it refunded. I will absolutely join council member Neil in saying, I am happy to help make this right for you and make a personal donation to try and make you somewhat whole again, because I do think this is a worthwhile project. But I cannot in any way support the idea of spending taxpayer money on this. My concern still is that we have $500, may not be a lot, but principle is everything. $500 that was in our budget that is not being spent on what we told the citizens we were going to spend it on. So for that, my suggestion, given this council's focus over the last year, is that we take that $500 that was not spent for what it was allocated on and add it to the debt payment, the, the capital debt reserve. Because this is clearly money in our budget that was not spent for what it was intended to be spent on. And therefore, we need to reallocate it to something appropriate that is of benefit to the citizens. Those are my comments.
Claudia, I'd just like to make a suggestion. I think you'll find, and there are several folks in the community that might be able to help you. There are a lot of opportunities, particularly for smaller amounts like that, for grant funding for projects like you're looking at. And, and I can, if you'd like, I can help you by putting you in touch with some folks that do grant writing and know where money is out there that would be available. And I would encourage that. And it might even help you with future projects or even expanding this one. So I'd be happy to share that information with you if you'd like. Thank you.
I, I, I kind of questioned then in the, the Keep With Them Part Beautiful committee that education will really not be one of the, the big key components. And when you're talking about taxpayer money being allocated in a way that the citizens wouldn't approve. I think there are a lot of citizens in our community that are wanting a more far reaching approach to taking care of the animals, finding ways to cohabitate. If I, I'm sort of disappointed that, that there isn't a more enlarged perspective on that. Like, this is robbing the citizens where actually I think it's enriching them. And when you start enriching your children and you're educating them, it makes all the difference in the world. They'll be your ambassadors as they grow up and make a difference in their community. So the other thing I want to just express is I've worked with a lot of things with the city. And I think you should really open up a broader perspective if embracing things that are going to enrich our city. I really do. I think sometimes there's bureaucracy to the point that it, it sort of negates the good. And I'm going to end it with that. So.
And I absolutely agree with you. I think there are plenty of citizens that would like to see us expand all of our education programs and support of wildlife in the area. There is a, a difference between how we do that as private citizens and how we do that as government elected officials who are fiduciaries of taxpayer money. It, it's one of those that everyone who finds that to be a worthwhile cause, I would certainly encourage them to support those causes on their own. But again, we have to consider we're spending all taxpayer money. I don't think this, I've ever seen this council not support causes like that. But monetarily versus supporting and championing those causes is unfortunately two different, two different avenues. And briefly, I'm going to ask Catherine, do you have anything, any comments or questions?
She's shaking her head, no.
Okay.
No, I'm, I'm good. Thanks.
Claudia, have you actually spoken to Dr. Neal about this? Well, he's with the schools, because this is an education program that you've actually conducted.
Well, actually, I'll go back to Steve Wolf, and he truly supported this. And we got, got involved with adopting Lions Park. And he was trying to get the ambassadors from the school over there to help in COVID hit. I'm gonna, that's the way it is. But he's not with us either, so.
Thank you, Claudia.
I just want to make a point to this council. And, and council member Ralph, I don't think that you were a part of council when this decision was made. So I, I just want to clarify. We agreed that this was a good idea, this council. We thought.
The bird or the deer?
The, the wildlife ambassador education.
Correct.
It does not necessarily specify that it had to be for deer. It was a variety of services of learning activities. So it doesn't say mandatory deer only. This is not my favorite thing to do. Obviously, from my voting history, you know, I don't necessarily support funding charitable things outside of taxpayers' purview. But it was a decision we had made. And she was operating on that assumption. Had we not made this assumption, or had we not made this decision, it's likely she would not have done what she did. And she didn't necessarily go outside the purview of what was offered under the $200 limit. The 300 with the videographer did not happen because it was supposed to be in partnership with Drive Smart, which is where the kids go to learn to drive. That didn't happen because of COVID. Now, how she spent her budget was a lesson learned, right? If you want to, even though these decisions were made, it's always best for anyone, if you're going to move forward with it, to come back to council and make sure that you know everything is clarified and what's happening, especially when councils change. Because different council members can make different decisions and they can change what previous councils decided. And that can be very aggravating. And I understand that. But it's what happens. So my point is, also, I agree with you 100%, but I also agree that the children are, are constituents as well. It's not just the adults. And this did benefit the children. And they did learn something. And they did get an experience that they enjoyed. So in my mind, there were taxpayers who benefited greatly from this.
So in my mind, there were taxpayers who benefited greatly from this service, and we did set aside the money to have this service enacted. Though it wasn't well-defined about what she could do, and it wasn't well-outlined. And we could argue those points, because there are points put out of designing a garden, blah, blah for deer. She did a lot of that. She did that with Lyons Park. She did that with the children, with picking out particular flowers, doing the research of where deer crossed. So she did meet those highlights as well. She just happened to also do things with birds. And as far as I read the language, she can. So I'm not going to do take backs. I think that it was a mistake not come to us ahead of time, or to at least come back and clarify since there were some new members. But at the same time, you did what we said you could do and what we would allocate the money for. So that's just my perspective, and I just wanted to share it with you guys and with you, Ms. Miller.
Thank you.
So, yes.
And Hillary, maybe it's, my confusion is the document, the language in this that we were handed, the packet, where it says proposal definition is, because several of us have referred to the language in there. Is this the language from the pre-authorization? Or are we, is this language proposal definition what we are voting for the future?
There is no future.
Well, I mean, for reimbursement.
The budget and allocating money, we had 500.
Yes.
She spent 500. We can either choose to-
Was this the definition under which the 500 was approved?
So what I have is an email
Okay.
that clarified what happened in that work session. And the language was the education program Junior Wildlife Ambassadors. This program creates an exceptional avenue for, for the students from elementary through high school to become involved in opportunities to better our community by a variety of service learning activities. As this program is student-driven, it will vary, it will vary, based on their creative ideas, resource availability, and the status of COVID during implementation. It continues with possible ideas that evolved from last year's group, which would have been 2019 or 2020, because this email is 2021. So 2020 ideas were a presentation booth at farmer's market with brochures, design a garden tour to highlight effective deer-resistant gardens in our city, landscaping and maintenance of city gardens, Be Deer Aware Week in our city with various festivities, posters, and public announcements. Work with local police to make our drivers safer by identifying high-risk areas in our community by sharing data, which they did, when they did the Where the Deers Cross on 24 and working with CDOT. And then they did do the design, well, they didn't do the garden tour, but they adopted Lyons Park, they did the deer-resistant flowers. So I don't like how it's coming to us.
Yeah.
And that's not a negative on your part. It, it's not a, a personal thing about you. It's, it's a frustra-, it's frustrating how we kind of let this die, you know, and forgot about it too. So it's not just you, it's us as well. So, and we did-
Who is, who is that email from and to?
So this uh, is um, from Suzanne and to Claudia and Rob, but it was Suzanne's summarization of the workshop.
It wasn't my summarization. It's the exact-
Exact.
And it would, it was presented to council from City Manager Tangman in a PowerPoint. I just cut the PowerPoint, dumped it in the email.
And that is verbatim language.
Verbatim.
This program is student-driven.
Verbatim. I did not change any of the language. It's not my summary at all. It's exactly what Mr. Tangman presented to you on council.
Okay. I, I'm just, so Suzanne, my question, or actually, it's probably for you, Michael. When it came to accounting, you guys said this isn't fit, and that's why it's before us now. And so, you know, this could have just been a check cut, but somehow the city determined that it was a no, and that's really what's before us now. And, and so for all of the parsing this out, you guys looked at it and made that assessment. And so we're saying, okay, if you made that assessment, it's a no. We have to honor that because we're the fiduciary oversight for what you spend it on. And so for all this backwards and forwards, I'm, I have to just say, if, if the city officials make it enough to bring it before this council, then it, there was an inconsistency worth noting. Is that correct?
If I can, um, Michael, if I can just answer, because it was brought to my attention. It was brought to me from Rob, and I said, you know what? I said, this is a little different than what was asked for. I didn't say it was a no or anything. I said, we need to ask council. Because they get to make the decision. You allocated it for this reason. I didn't feel comfortable signing for something that deviated from that. I wanted to bring it back to council and allow you to make the decision. I wasn't saying no. I just wanted you to make the decision.
And the cost deviated.
And, and that's especially the case as this was appropriated into the city council budget.
Okay. Well, are you, do you need a motion here for us to move forward? Are we gonna just talk about this? Hey, go ahead.
Oh, we have two more, two more council members that want to get a thought out, and then we can make a motion.
I was gonna make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, so for one, I cannot let it pass without making the comment that I wish uh, this council and many others would spend as much time carefully considering every $500 of taxpayer money that we designate in the budget as we have this. Um, quite honestly, I would ask this council that we table this till the next council meeting. As small of an amount as this is, I am really struggling. Um, I would appreciate a little bit of time um, to simply wrap this over in my mind, um, not only with the obligations I've made to the citizens that elected me, but my principles and values. Um, because again, walking into this, this was not anything I think we considered um, to go where it did. Um, so that would be my request and suggestion is that we table it till the next meeting so that we all have a little more time to stew on this, a little more time to look into it, certainly thoroughly read the email that uh, Mayor Protem Labar has shared with us, um, and come back and revisit it again. That would be um, my request. Um, at the very least, if we have to take a vote, um, I'd prefer to vote no and hope that it ties, and so it's automatically tabled anyways. So that's my two thoughts.
My only concern about that is the budget and timeframe.
It's, as, as I said, it was appropriated and the money was for 21. It was spent in 21. Um, we are trying to finish, shut and clear out and do all these rules for 21 by the end of the month. I, I'm sure we can make this work if the, if the council did choose to table it.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion. I'm gonna make a motion that we appropriate $200, because that amount is legitimately for the brochures and the work that uh, you did in that regard. You did not do the videography, so that wasn't spent. And I just think, um, I make a motion, we approve $200 towards this.
I'll second that exact thought, because I do think the language, what you're asking is supported by the language for the 200. I think we get into trouble uh, with how it was appropriated with the other 300 for the videographer. So I second yours strongly.
Okay. Zulawaga?
Yes.
Alfieri?
No.
Case?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five, one.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Miller.
You know what I'd really like? Uh, you've approved the 200. I really wonder if we could just keep it with the council. I don't really, I really appreciate you going to bat for me, and I understand that situation. But if you could use that $200 towards some other really good thing, I'd feel better about it. I'd like to just leave the $200 with the council.
COVID's over, you could, COVID's over, you could put it towards your, back towards your deer project and feel good about it.
I'm gonna say that's very kind of you, but like Councilmember Alfieri makes the point, then it just goes back to us, and I don't know that it gets spent any more wise. So I think what you did is very worthwhile and was a wise choice, and I think that it should come to you, so.
I'll spend it in an educational light.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Claudia. And Claudia, I remind you again, I would be happy to um, support you and help you with ideas.
There would have been more than just. Wow. It's 8:25 and we're on 23.
Extension.
Do you need this?
So, okay. All right, moving on, I have a uh, letter C. And letter C is in regard to a letters that we wrote on behalf of solidarity for Boulder County for the fire that they just experienced and the homes that they lost. And it is a letter from staff and council, and I'll just go ahead and read it. And then um, we'd like all of council to sign, and then we will send it to Boulder County. So it's Dear Commissioners Levy, Loachman, and Jones. We have been deeply saddened to witness the devastation from the Marshall Fire, Fire in Boulder County. I've had too much caffeine, so my tongue is way ahead of my brain. On behalf of Woodland Park residents, we would like to extend our deepest condolences for your residents who have lost their homes. While we cannot fully understand the pain your community is experiencing, we hurt for you, for Superior and for Louisville. Our community was impacted by two major wildfires over past, the past 20 years. Though some of the scars remain, we believe that our community has emerged stronger as a result. Please know that we stand in solidarity with you and your residents. We as council, along with Woodland Park city staff, stand by to support you however we can. The residents, commissioners, and staff of Boulder County have been and will continue to be in our prayers and thoughts. And each council member is gonna go ahead and sign this letter. So I'm gonna go ahead and pass this out.
And we have that also for Lewis, Lewis Town and-
Yes, it'll be uh, for um, all three.
Lewis, yeah.
Right. Good.
And, okay. And I'm gonna go ahead and hand out to you guys, and then if you'll just circle it back to me.
It came out late this afternoon. Okay.
Thanks to you all for preparing that for us. That's very kind.
Suzanne, do you need these copies signed as well, or just, okay? Okay.
Am I supposed to do something?
No.
Oh, no, Michael's looking at me, and I'm like, I wait for me to-
It was your turn to play the Jeopardy music.
I thought I didn't hear something.
Yeah. Yeah, I think Councilmember Neil, did you have, did you want to introduce an item?
Yeah, I, I, and this would be under item four, additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda.
Okay, so I'll move on to item number four, and we don't have uh, the minutes. We're not gonna review them tonight. Those will come back on the 20th. And then we're moving on to A?
Well, no, the, the item that I wanted to bring up
Oh, we're on-
for four is uh, both Catherine and I had, the two council member had submitted a request for a topic to be added to the agenda that didn't make it to this, but I'd still like to um, attempt a motion and a vote on uh, an item that is, I'd like to have as an addition to this agenda.
Okay.
And to, to let the fellow council members, it's more a ceremonial or symbolic gesture. We're at the 89th day before uh, the elections. And I did this very carefully. Yesterday was the 90th, the magic number that if somebody resigned or somebody got run over by a bus, you know, we needed to reserve our last appointment so that we wouldn't have to trigger a special election, costing the citizens additional money by having a, an election. We are at the 89th day, so no matter what happens, somebody could resign, somebody could be hit by a bus, there would be no special election. Um, I'm about to make, or request to make a motion to revisit the topic of appointing the mayor. Um, we, we have had a mayor pro tem who has done the function of a mayor for almost yeah, a year and a half, over a year. And it's symbolic because it's not gonna change anything. Hillary's gonna sit at the table as the, you know, leading our meetings and everything. But I guess I'm a sentimental person when I see somebody volunteer a- and do the work she's done for this amount of time and not, and never actually be able to say I was the mayor. I, I just feel bad about it. So I'm gonna ask uh, for an opportunity to make a motion to appoint Hillary Labar as the mayor of Woodland Park.
I will second that.
Well, this is an added item, and I, and I don't, and, and as, as sentimental as that is, I just wanted, wasn't given proper notice. I didn't see it on here. And if you want to look at that for the next meeting, gives us time to think about it, I'm happy to do that. But to add it to this agenda, uh, I, I'm not for that, so.
That's okay. I'll make some comments. Um, so the fact of the matter is, we're well aware, if you want to do that, it's gonna happen. There's nothing any of us up here can do to stop it at this point. We all know where everybody stands. The fact that you would bring this up at this point, when we're 90 days out from an election to make it more divisive on this council, I'm sorry, that just irritates me. Just let it be at this point. We have had a rough year and a half. We have managed to make it through. Yes, Hillary has been doing a great job. So to bring this up at this point, why couldn't you just leave it alone and let it be?
I'm not even gonna respond to that, because I, I have my reasons. I think it would be appropriate. I had no idea what the vote would be. All I know is one other council member and I have talked about it, and it, it could be voted down, for all I know.
Excuse me, Mayor Protem, could I ask for some respect from Alf, Ms. Alfieri?
Absolutely not. Councilmember Case, you have made plenty of offhanded comments about other council members making comments.
Just pointing out policies and procedures of this council. Thank you, Mayor.
And Mayor, Mayor Protem Labar, I will defer to our, our city attorney if it, it is inappropriate because it didn't get posted. I mean, I had requested the topic be added. The email did not get acted upon. It didn't get seen, um, so it was never acted upon. So the topic never got here. If your comfort, you do not want to uh, do that because it was not properly posted, then I will withdraw my motion and wait for two weeks, and I will bring the topic on the agenda. But I do formally request that that agenda item be there, and it was based on Catherine Nakai and my request.
And I will withdraw my second, Rusty, if that's what you prefer to do.
Let, let's go ahead and honor Robert yours. Two weeks is not gonna make a big deal. It's, it's symbolic. Um, so I withdraw my motion for two weeks.
I'm just gonna say, I didn't know, and that's a nice gesture, and I do appreciate it. And whether I would be appointed that or stay in the role I am, I'm happy, so.
I understand. It's symbolic.
And Councilmember Nakai, I don't know if there was anything you wanted to add, because I can't see or hear you. So I just want to make sure I don't cut you off before we move on to the next topic.
You're fine.
Before you do, I'd like to just thank Hillary for her grace.
Thank you. You're all very welcome. I enjoy working with all of you. I think we're actually a pretty darn good council, even when we don't agree, so. And it's been a long time since we've had a good functioning council, even when we don't agree, so. It's rare, because there, the disagreements have been really difficult. But up here, we just say we don't agree, and then we carry on with business, and it's been nice. So I appreciate all of you. All right, so now, I think I'm on the right number. I think I'm on the right letter.
Just be a killer.
Not yet, I don't think. Don't make me nervous.
Catherine, I think I interrupted Catherine.
Oh, I think Catherine said she was okay. She- Oh, I think Catherine said she was okay, she
No, I was fine, Kelly, you didn't interrupt me, thanks.
Okay, all right, so, thank you. And then, so, we're on five, consent calendar, 5A, approval of December 2nd, 2021, regular council minutes. And Suzanne?
We're going to table, we're, those are the ones you delete, took up the agenda.
Okay.
So those are off.
Those are off.
Right. So we are on 5B, we're on the eight, the, pardon me? We're on 5B, which is the HR Green Professional Service Contract, which needs to be tabled, because HR Green has not had a chance to resubmit their comments and everything, it's on here as a formality, because council voted for it to be on the January 6th meeting, we now have to vote to table it to the 20th meeting, so that's what, I need a motion to table the HR Green contract to January 20th.
Perfectly happy. I move that we table Agenda Item 5B for the HR Green Professional Services Agreement.
Second.
In discussion, can we have a little discussion?
Sure.
Just a moment, just, this is informational, I did meet with the city manager per the request, and we went through the language, we made several tweaks is what I would call them, that better protects the, the city and the language that we came up with. I think you'll have no problems with, please take a look at it. They were minor, but from my perspective, being in the field, they, they were significant.
Okay, so Robert, did you get the opportunity to meet also, or Rusty, was it just you? Okay, all right, that wasn't the one topic where you guys both wanted to meet? Okay. Okay, sometimes I remember.
So I have a motion and a second, a motion from Alfieri, a second from Neil to table the contract, I'll call the vote, Alfieri? I, I thought Councilmember Zulu Aga seconded, sorry.
Neil explained.
The comment.
Case?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Nakai?
You're on mute.
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Zuluaga?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries unanimously.
Was bound to happen at some point.
All right, so we're off to 5C. And that's approval of an engineering design and construction oversight contract with JDS, and Kip Wiley is the presenter for that.
Good evening, council, before you tonight is a contract for $107,000 for the Dove project. If you recall, funds were approved out of the ERP money for this project. This is a water treatment requirement for the state of Colorado. We have been working with JDS Hydro since 2014 on this, and I'm pleased to bring this forward and finally get this thing done. I can answer any questions you have.
Counsel?
I guess I just, clarification, this is something that's required, the, this
Let's just say I've been pushing back for a lot of years on this one until now.
So it's an inevitable contract.
So to add on to Councilmember Zulu Aga's comment, that was my same question, is if it is required, why do we have to vote on it? It sounds like wasn't necessarily something we wanted to do, but you've done everything you can to try and prevent it. Can you maybe explain to us what some of the concerns were?
Well, the plant was built in 1997, it met the requirements at the time, those requirements have since changed. We believe that we can meet those requirements even with the change, however, we can't prove it. And that's what we've been arguing with, with the state, with JDS's help. So, because we can't prove it, we have to move forward, and we have had recent discussions with the state, and I'm hopeful we won't receive a notice of violation with the approval of the contract to move forward. However, they might want to see boots on the ground instead of just design, so we will see.
And do we have this money allocated somewhere? Were you kind of planning on this? I figured so, so that, you know, normally I would question this, but Kip, I know if you've said you've tried everything you can to avoid it, and there's no way around it, I trust the money has to be spent.
Basically, we're to the point if they issue a letter, it'll be probably a year timeline that I cannot meet, so I'm trying to get the horse in front of the cart and get moving.
Well, thank you for everything you've done to try and mitigate this. Counsel, anything further?
Just one, that's quite, so this has come from Biden Boondoggle Funds, is that right?
Yeah, I forget when we approved these, but
It is federal funding, and this is a topic that was brought, brought up to us in September, so that's how it's here now, because it was something we talked about and agreed to, so.
Okay, good, I move that we approve.
I'll second. Who seconded, I'm sorry?
I did.
Okay, we're gonna vote with your voting machine now. When you guys were looking for it, so.
Come on Suzanne, suspense is killing.
I could do much faster by hand.
I know, that's what I'm saying.
Thank you, counsel. Motion is passed 6-0 unanimously.
Thank you, counsel.
Very good, thanks, Kip. Okay, we're off to public comment on items not on the agenda. I do not have a sign up list. Rob, do you have anyone on Zoom? Is there anyone on the sign up list? Okay.
No public comment.
Seeing none, we're going to move on to unfinished business. Being none. Moving on to eight, ordinances on initial posting. And we've got A, consider ordinance 1416 on initial posting. I'm just going to remind council, for the sake of time, it's initial posting. So we don't have to have long drawn out conversations about the topics this evening. They will be moving to public hearings where we can then have our long drawn out discussions all night long, for as long as you want, but this evening, let's try to keep it short and sweet, and it is Karen's first time presenting to all of us. So, welcome Karen.
Welcome Karen.
Thank you, I'm very happy to be here in Woodland Park. So the item I have for you this evening is for you to consider ordinance number 1416 on initial posting. This would amend Title 18 of the Woodland Park Municipal Code to address changes to family childcare homes as required by recent state legislation known as House Bill 21-1222, and ask you to set the public hearing for January 20th, 2022 on this topic, please.
And the only thing I'll ask the council is, does, is there anyone who doesn't understand what this is and needs some clarification? I'll ask my question, and if you decide it doesn't fit, then we'll save it for later.
Sure.
But my question is, again, just as with what Kip presented, it says as required, so I'm not understanding if it's required, why it's coming before us to be voted on as it's written as seeming like we don't have a choice to approve this.
The purpose of this item at the public hearing would be to amend our municipal code, so it is then consistent with state law. So that is what we need to do, we've got a state law that came out that says there's changes, and what we've got in place now did not align, so we've got to get rid of that inconsistency, so hence the need for the hearing to amend our local code.
And only the council can do that.
Can, can you help us with this, Jeff? I, I just, I struggle with the idea of us being put in a position to ask to be vote on some, vote, be voting on something that we don't have a choice not to approve.
I, I, I get the dissonance, but the, the this is a standard thing that we're confronted with when we're, we have a higher level of government. The feds will do things that oblige us to make changes in our code. Here, the state made some changes with respect to these residential group owns, and we're required by law to make conforming amendments.
So what is the consequence if, for instance, we don't pass this, or move it on to public hearing, or pass it then?
Well, then we could be sued by an operator of one of these kinds of facilities for failure to comply with state law.
Thank you.
But our home rule status, doesn't that give us the choice on whether we accept the state law or not?
What?
Or we can actually deviate from it?
That's a really good question, Rusty. It's true that in this law, the General Assembly declared this particular area a matter of statewide concern, thus purporting to preempt home rule cities in, in obliging us to follow state law. But the General Assembly saying so doesn't make it so. Only the courts can decide whether something is a matter of statewide concern. And it's absolutely true, this law has not been tested by the courts yet. You know, I, I personally find it objectionable that the General Assembly levied this mandate on local government, but it is the law. And as your chief legal officer, I have to advise you that the prudent thing to do is conform our, our code to the state law.
Okay, got it, I just wanted to understand the status as a home rule, we did have a choice.
Yeah, it may be prudent, but it's also rolling over and saying, okay, state, you go ahead and dictate what you think is priority for our community, and we are abdicating our home rule to do this. And so what's to stop us being the case in Colorado that says butt out? It's not your purview, you might think it's your, your purview for the law, but it isn't. And what that's doing is just escalating the number of things that are escalating from being we're in charge of our own community, to the state's telling us what to do, or the feds are telling us what to do. You know, we're just breaching the, the constitution inch by inch and going, oh, well, we don't want to be bothered with the contest, so we'll just, we'll just change.
Well, the risk cuts both directions, the court have, the courts haven't been absolutely clear that we win in this case. But somebody will probably take this thing to court, some city will probably decide they don't want to comply with this thing, and they're going to go to court. But that's probably some city with, a big city with a lot of resources, a lot of money to spend on lawyers. But absolutely, Woodland Park, you guys could decide to be the test case if you want.
David only had five stones.
I'm gonna have this conversation This conversation in the public hearing.
It would be really great for the public to hear your comments on the issue, however, this is not the best idea to make this the cornerstone of pushing against the state, because this affects people's businesses up here. And the business that they can continue in childcare. And that's a crucial business up here, because it's few and far between, so.
But does it, they can continue doing what they do, they can, there's nothing to stop that, in fact, it makes it easier. Looks to me like they've got more, they can do more things at liberty in the, in the community under the state law, it just says now that this oversight is with the state rather than us locally. So if we do nothing about it, what is the consequence of that?
It continues on, as it has been, if we do nothing about it, those businesses continue to operate as they always have.
And in fact, businesses could go ahead and operate with the new state law, and then bring it to a court, bring, bring an action if we tried to enforce that, is that, is that what would happen?
Well, the gist of the preemption is, what the state law says is that these, these types of homes for kids can be located in any zoning district, and it tells local governments, you must allow them in any zoning district. If Woodland Park chose not to conform its law to the, to the new state law, then the result would be that these homes can, Woodland Park are only legally permitted in certain zoning districts, not all zoning districts.
It's actually a limitation on their business.
Yeah, so that's where that would give rise to what I described earlier, so somebody comes in, they want to apply it in zone where we don't allow these things. The law, the state law says they can do it, our law says they can't, there's the conflict, they sue us and you spend money on lawyers.
Yeah.
And this is one instance where the state is not making it more burdensome.
Except that they're taking the role of the authority, which is where the rub is.
Right, which is why I was saying this is not necessarily the cornerstone.
Right, right, right. We can move it on for discussion, but these are the issues that I hope some of the community come
Was this considered a QJ one, because we didn't have those so everything here is legislative, because I didn't see any QJ markings.
You can talk your heart out about it. And look into all the daycare that's up here.
Couple of weeks ago, this was before the planning board, and they were in the same point, it's like, well, what can we do?
Yeah.
Mayor Protem, would you like a motion?
Yes, please. I move that we approve ordinance number 1416, amending Title 18 of the municipal code and move it for a public hearing on January 20th, 2022.
I'll second that.
Hey, council, you may vote. Thank you, motions carried 5-1 with Councilmember Zuluaga voting no.
On principle.
Very good. All right, so we're going to move on to item B, and items B, C, D, E, F, and G are all ordinances on initial postings, but they all have to do with the charter amendments. And we can hit on, we, well, we can vote on each one individually to move it forward. But I also know that Frank Connors has a presentation that he wants to give for the public hearing, and I know that he's preparing that, and I don't want to take any wind from his sails. And I know that, I'm sure a few council members have, would like to talk about each topic, so for the sake of time, unless there's just something really critical that you are not comfortable moving it forward to public hearing, would it be okay if we just make motions on each and, and get them moved forward? So if you hit one that you just got to ask something about, that's cool, but my, my recommendation is to just get them moved to public hearing.
Can we just make one and just say, make a motion to approve ordinance number 1410, 1411, 1412?
You could.
And 14, go ahead, Stephanie.
I, I would prefer to vote on them individually, but I promise I will make no comments until the public hearing, simply just vote on each ordinance. Works for me. I would prefer to vote on them individually, but again, no comments, no discussion until the public hearing.
Okay.
That's totally fine with me.
I'm going to do this rapid fire then. Well, so then
Yes.
So then
Kind of like I did with the appointments. And then Councilmember Nakai, are you okay with that?
Don't go rapid fire, because I got to work through my notes.
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay, I'd like to make a, a motion to approve ordinance number 1410, series 2021, on initial posting of an ordinance of city council for the city of Woodland Park, submitting a ballot question to the electors of the city to amend the city's charter to specify that elected and appointed officials may be removed from office for misconduct and set the public hearing for January 20th, 2022.
I will second.
Thank you, for the sake of time, I'm going to just do them by hand.
Okay.
Okay. Case?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Zuluaga?
No.
Alfieri?
No.
Thank you, motion carries 4-2.
I'd like to make a, a motion to approve ordinance number 1411, series 2021 on initial posting, and ordinance of the city council for the city of Woodland Park, Colorado, submitting a ballot question to the electors of the city to amend the city's charter to remove all gender-specific references from the charter and set the public hearing for January 20, 2022.
I'll second.
Thank you. Labar?
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Zuluaga?
Yes.
Alfieri?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries unanimously.
There's a typo in the chart, in the ordinance. There's a typo in it. References. Fourth line down.
I'll have to confer with the city attorney, because I just
That's all.
Spelling.
It's just spelled wrong.
Okay.
And I will make a motion to approve ordinance number 1412, series 2021 on initial posting and ordinance of the city council for the city of Woodland Park, Colorado, submitting a ballot question submitting a ballot question to the electors of the city to amend the city's charter to authorize the city manager to sign contracts of a value below an amount to be set by the city council and set the public hearing for January twentieth, twenty twenty two.
I'll second.
Let Catherine have that, okay?
Thank you.
Nakai?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Zuluwaga?
Yes.
Alfieri?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number fourteen thirteen, series twenty twenty one on initial posting and ordinance of the City Council for the City of Woodland Park, Colorado, submitting a ballot question to the electors of the city to amend the city's charter to authorize the city manager to require that the oath of office include an affirmation that the officer swears to tell the truth in performing the duties of the office and set the public hearing for January twentieth, twenty twenty two.
I'll second.
Thank you. Neil?
Yes.
Zuluwaga?
No.
Alfieri?
No.
Case?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries four two.
Like to make a motion to approve ordinance number fourteen fourteen, series twenty twenty one on initial posting and ordinance of the City Council for the City of Woodland Park, Colorado, submitting a ballot question to the electors of the city to amend the city's charter to repeal and replace the content, general con. Place the current. We've got a little typo here. The current general conflict of interest provision with a more detailed and comprehensive conflict of interest provision and set the public hearing for January twenty 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 two.
I'll second.
Thank you. Alfieri?
No.
Case?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Zuluwaga?
No.
Thank you. Motion carries four two.
I'd like to make a, a motion to approve ordinance number fourteen fifteen, series twenty twenty one on initial posting and ordinance of the City Council for the City of Woodland Park, Colorado, submitting a ballot question to the electors of the city to amend the city's charter to clarify the options for city council in filling a vacancy on city council and set the public hearing for January twentieth, twenty twenty two.
I'll second. Alfieri?
Right in there, girl.
Had to look up and see which man.
Rapid fire.
Case.
Kelly, you're on.
Yes.
Sorry, I didn't hear you.
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Zuluwaga?
Yes.
Alfieri?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Man, that was easy.
We should do that more often.
Yeah, but the discussion's next time.
Yeah, now we know the twentieth is gonna be a painfully long meeting.
It's the proper time.
Everyone come prepared. Bring your caffeine. All right. So we're on to number nine, public hearings. Seeing none. Ten, new business. We have none. We are on to eleven. Reports. Oh, Rob's got hands. Oh, okay. Did he, we can, if he had, if he had something he wanted to say, we can. Did he bring it back? I just don't want him to feel like we cut him off. Okay. All right. Moving on to reports, the only report I have this evening is Happy New Year and, oh, oh, Rob has his hand up again. Is it okay? Do you guys mind that we take it? Because I just, I didn't even know. I didn't pay attention to Zoom whatsoever, so I don't want someone to be cut off. Are you guys okay?
I'm fine with it.
Okay, Mr. Fury.
It's Joe, Joe Fury.
Yeah.
It's eight fifty nine, got five minutes for comment. Go for it.
Okay, Joe Fury, five six five Pembroke Drive. Hello, everybody. I, this is really a process question regarding all these ordinances. Are we going to be able to see more specifics? Like, for example, ordinance fourteen ten talks about officials may be removed for misconduct. Is there somewhere that says what the removal process is and, and defines misconduct? But are we gonna see that before the twentieth public hearing or?
It's, it should be available online on the current packet, so you can scroll through and, and find it online. If you don't want to find it online, that is the point of this evening is moving it into public hearing on the twentieth. And on the twentieth, we will painfully go through each one line by line, word by word. And I'm sure that Mr. Connors will have a wonderfully entertaining presentation for us. And I'm sure that council members who participated in this will also have wonderfully entertaining things to educate us on with, with these topics because yes, there is a lot and there is a lot to know about them. So we, we will have the discussion publicly and the information is available right now on the city website under tonight's agenda in the packet.
Okay, okay. And just one quick comment, maybe I can talk to Suzanne offline tomorrow or something, but I spent like fifteen minutes poking around the city website looking for the city charter and I couldn't find it. So maybe I just need to talk.
You, very quickly tomorrow offline how to find it. It's very, very simple. Or, I mean.
Okay.
Do you want to know? Tomorrow. If you want.
Just tell them no.
Yeah, you just go, sir, you just go right to the City Woodland Park homepage. Are you there?
Uh, no, I don't, I don't want to do that because then I might lose you guys here on the computer screen.
You know my number, Joe.
Okay.
Joe, the only reason I think we should do it is because if anybody's listening to this recording and wants to do the same thing, she can tell it to them now and they will be able to hear it.
Well, okay.
And Joe, I think it may be. Yeah, it's a little confusing for those that are listening and don't know. When you go to the homepage, if you look at the screen, you'll see it municipal code. It's an icon. The charter is at the top of the municipal codes. So when you click on the icon saying municipal code, it actually takes you to the charter and the municipal code.
Ah.
On the homepage.
Okay, yeah, I, I guess I didn't know that. Okay.
Okay. Suzanne, was there anything you wanted to clarify about that or?
We're, Grace is our website person. She's going to make it say municipal code charter or charter municipal code. She's doing it right now. Joe.
Joe, that's good.
So we need to hear that kind of thing.
Okay, that's, well, that's why I said it. So I was, so you're saying I was right. It's not, it's not.
Wasn't just you.
There, it's just not obvious.
It's just not obvious, yeah.
You just helped the whole town, so thank you.
On a rare occasion, government does move quickly. Is that a dad joke? Oh, that's coming, sorry.
It's a government joke.
All right, I'm gonna go back to reports if everyone's okay with that. Yep. And the only thing I had to add was that if you have Christmas trees, live Christmas trees that you need to get rid of, there is a Christmas tree drop off behind City Hall. It is available twenty four seven until the seventeenth of this month, so you can bring your Christmas tree over here and dump it in the dumpster. Please don't leave it beside or in the parking lot or against one of the doors. Please put it in the dumpster and it's free and just come, come bring it and do it. So thanks. And again, Happy New Year to everyone and to my audience on Zoom and in person. Thanks for coming and participating with us. Councilwoman Ralph Yuri.
So the only thing I would have to report on is Charter Review Committee, which I haven't been able to attend most of the meetings, but luckily our rapid fire voting session pretty much covered the outcome of it. So on that, I think the only report I have is to wish Councilmember Case a belated happy birthday. Yes, I'm calling you out. Twenty, the twenty ninth, right?
Twenty ninth of December.
And you turned twenty nine years old.
Yeah, right. Yeah, yep. I don't know how many times I've done that.
Belated happy birthday.
I appreciate that.
Hi, Councilmember Case.
I'm up. Um, you know, I don't think I have anything. We have our Parks and Rec Advisory Board meeting next week. So I'll report at the next meeting what we talk about because I know we're having one, right, Dawn? We received our agenda today, I think, so we'll report on that. I'll let Dawn help me if I need it next meeting. Thank you.
Councilwoman Neil?
I do not have any because the Historic Preservation Committee canceled their January meeting and the DDA meeting is not until next Tuesday.
Okay, very good. Councilmember Zuluwaga?
PPACG, I think the only thing I would comment is that I did a chat with the city manager about preparing some sort of communication with the county with regards to reliever route proposal that we have happening, so we should expect to see something like that to sign off on and just to get some, some regional cooperation moving forward. Funding's coming in twenty twenty three, but now's a good time to start talking to interested parties, the mines, the casinos, the county and even the, you know, the ski resorts and things, so. Anyway, so that's coming up.
Very good. Councilmember Nakai.
One of these days, I first I wanted to thank Jeff and Elliot for doing such a fantastic speedy job writing the all the ordinances for the Charter Review Committee. You guys did a phenomenal job. Thank you. Other than that, I don't have anything. Main Street doesn't have anything until probably the next meeting when they get their, all of their year end reports done.
Very good. City Attorney?
I have no report. Happy New Year, everyone. Robert, I have a really awful joke for you that I'll tell you later.
All right. I'm getting used to, I'm getting used to Michael's dad joke, so that's all right. You, you're being, you're being up, upstaged here.
So just, just one real announcement for you. We are doing our first Citizens Academy of the year and we're having two in twenty twenty two. So the twos. If applications are open right now, you can access those on the city's website. And you can apply through February eighth. The class starts on Tuesday, February second. So.
Twenty second, no. February twenty second through April fourth.
February twenty second through April fourth. February twenty second. Washington's birthday, right?
Twenty one.
Twenty one.
Yeah, right. Has nothing to do with it. We won't cover president's birthdays, but just that way you can remember. Maybe, maybe.
Yes.
And so we are getting applications, so go ahead and go do that now.
You're forgetting about me.
Oh, my apologies.
And your dad joke.
Oh. But why don't skeletons drink coffee?
Obvious.
I have a stomach for it.
Good, good thing you had a Halloween one left over.
I, yes. Left in the closet.
Very good. Suzanne.
The question is there any grease on?
Jeff, you better calm down. Suzanne has some things she needs to tell us.
Now, I am just going to mention, if you do not know, it's election season and election season began on February fourth, January fourth, which was Tuesday. The start of petitions being picked up by candidates and the petitions are back due into our office on January twenty fourth. I don't give out names at this point until the petitions come back. And we, I, all I can say is I've had six people pick up petitions so far. So that's your election update.
Very good. I think this meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Thanks. Have a good night.